Okay, it's seven o'clock and we're gonna call this meeting to order. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here and taking an interest in this topic. Uh, there's been a lot of misinformation, so you know, talking about it, we'd like to hopefully have some questions. We have questions, you have questions, and hopefully we're gonna have a chance to go through that. Uh, this is an informational meeting concerning Classic Car Show, proposed by Kara Penny of RPM Marketing. This is an opportunity to hear more details about the proposal and for all of us to ask important questions. Also, tomorrow night, the Board of Selectmen is holding a special meeting here at Town Hall at seven o'clock to discuss the topics covered tonight. No public comment will be offered then, so tonight is the time to ask questions. Prior to the our Board of Selectmen meeting on the seventh of March, uh, we will be putting out a survey to the town so we can get more feedback. Um, so this is all about listening to what's going on and hearing your comments. Uh, we have asked Chris Hagerty to serve as our moderator tonight, and he will outline his meeting procedure, so I'd like to welcome Chris. Thank you for doing this tonight.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, good evening, Roxbury. Um, I'd like to thank each of you for coming up for what I believe will be an informative session where each of us will be able to ask questions, clear any misconceptions, um, and get our answers. If you haven't done so, as Patrick said, um, and you want to ask questions tonight, please put your name on the form over by the door. Um, please keep your comments focused on tonight's topic and limit the time to a minute each if you would. This is a time for questions, not for each of us to share our opinions. As Patrick has already mentioned, there will be a way for each of us to do that before a decision is made. Uh, we are likely to have a number of similar questions and because of the weather, I'd like to get us out of here at a reasonable time. Um, so if someone has already asked a question by calling you and someone has already asked the question that you had, you can pass and we can move on. Um, I would like to add that each of the elected representatives, town employees, board members, and volunteers share your passion for Roxbury. Um, please be respectful, considerate of each other's time, and speak clearly when I call on you. Um, we did receive a number of emails and letters. Um, those will be on file in the Selectmen's office if anyone wants to read them. I will read the names we got from the people we received them from, and those will be on file. Uh, we received letters from Kevin Kennedy, Charles Miller, Paul Healy, Margaret Minor, Missy Cole, Christie Hardy, John Russell, Ralph and Catherine, Kathleen Barton, Randall Bouvier, Mark Tiberio, Charles Farrell, and Megan Hodge. Um, at this time, I'd like to hand the meeting back over to Patrick to introduce the presenter. Once done, we'll be back for the questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Chris. And just a reminder, we're gonna hold all the questions till the end, but I'd like to introduce Kara Penny with RPM Agency.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Um, looking forward to kind of answering any questions and kind of walk you through what we have proposed as a potential fundraising event for the fire department and ambulance department here in Roxbury. Uh, I'll give you a little bit about my background and the background of the agency. I'm from Southbury originally. Um, my dad was first elected to South for 14 years, kind of grew up there while it was becoming Southbury as it is today. Um, so I'm very familiar with the area. I moved back here because I love the area. It means that much to me. Um, and so when the idea of possibly doing something to help not only Roxbury, but this community and surrounding areas, it kind of struck a chord for us to put something together. The RPM Agency is a division of Celadon Entertainment, which is a larger S corp. That's too much for anybody to worry about, but the RPM Agency was formed in 2017. Uh, we have two major verticals of business. Half of our business, we represent race teams and race drivers in their careers with their sponsorship, their marketing, their PR, accelerating into other areas of racing. And then the other half is producing large events. Those large events generally are around vintage car. They're all high-end events. Uh, we do do some other types of events. Um, we just finished doing an ice festival for Southbury, and we do some jazz. I'm also on the board of the Water Race Symphony, so I kind of bleed our production into what we do for the symphony as well. Um, we are no stranger to vintage car concours d'élégance. For those that do not know what a concours d'élégance is, it started way back in the late 1600s in France, where on Sundays, people would take their carriages out and they'd come out in their best gear, and they would just sit around and talk and try to outdo each other with their pretty carriages. As the carriages went to horse drawn, horse drawn to horseless, that continues to what we know today as concours d'élégance. Um, most people note that like Palm Beach, Amelia Island are renowned here in the U.S. I have actually worked on both of those and have been a consultant to Palm Beach and Amelia Island. Uh, we produce the Colonial Concorde, which is in Milford every year. Um, and we are doing, bringing back the Southbury Classics, which was a big event in Southbury that kind of fell aside. And I am on the board of the Southbury's 350th birthday celebration, so they've asked me to bring this event back to life for them. Um, the proposed event dates for the Roxbury Concours d'élégance is the weekend of September 8th through the 10th. Now, the eighth is kind of a jump start. So it would start with a car, coffee cars and critters across the way in Monts and Meadows in the morning. There would be a rally and a kickoff party. The kickoff party right now is being proposed to be at Mine Hill. Now, the rally, just so you all understand, the rally is not a race throughout town. It's a very slow and even paced drive throughout the Litchfield Hills. A lot of these cars can't go that fast. Um, but anyone who is involved with the rally understands it's more about appreciating the beauty of the area. Uh, we make stops along the way so that people get familiar with some of the things that are in the area. Uh, to be part of the rally, you have a fee of $200. Uh, that's for two people in your car, and if there's more than two people, it's a hundred dollars more. All of that money goes directly to the charities. And that's just a way to kick off what we do. There is an opening night reception. It's just to our kind of little cocktail party for people that are actually in the competition and sponsors. Um, that's when they all get their, their medallions and where they're gonna have the cars on the field, and it goes away because the goal of when you do an opening night reception is there are a lot of owner clubs in the car community, Mercedes owners and whoever, and they'll usually come to these type of high-end events in a group. And then what they do is they, as a group, go to a local restaurant and they have dinner that night, and that starts off their weekend at the concours. Um, Saturday and Sunday are the actual concours days. Uh, they are primarily daytime events, and I will walk you through the presentation. So the classes of cars that are in a concours, um, cars must be 20 years old or older, 20 years or older. They have to be the original chassis, original parts, authenticated parts if replaced, and have to be restored to pristine condition and working condition, white glove tested. Tested on the design, the history of the car, and also the accuracy of the restoration process. It's a high-end event, but it is not an elite event. It's very inclusive. The mission of why we do these events is obviously, we like to kind of spark the next generation of car enthusiasts for the amazing design and engineering and thought that went into creating the automobile and to where it has evolved today into electronic vehicles. So throughout the weekend, there are a lot of activities that go on at the concours that keep people engaged at all times, also just kind of the appreciation of the cars. We have a kids' area. We have an arts and alley. We have a culinary corner. We do have entertainment. It's primarily in the jazz and sort of like country sort of vibe. Um, but it, it's not rocketist. It's not loud, and it's not a rock concert. It's entertainment. We do have seminars, educational seminars throughout the weekend. Some of the seminars that we are proposing for this weekend are the Evolution of the Electronic Vehicle, featuring Bruce Amster from Redline Restoration, who not only has worked on turn-of-the-century steam and electric vehicles, he was one of the six people that designed the first electric vehicle in the X Prize, and we actually have one of those prototypes available at hand. We will be working on another seminar called Art of Master Build, really kind of taking a look at the beauty and design and engineering that goes into automobiles. Um, and we have a very renowned master builder doing that. We have another seminar that will be sponsored by Limeark and Hoffman Motorsports, and it all, it's all about, um, the development of racing, how one can get involved with racing, um, how like you could take classes through Skip Barber at the Limeark. It's just people who are interested in that space. And then we also have a special guest, who is the great granddaughter and granddaughter of the gentleman that is the founder of Cole Automobiles, I, AKA Choo Choo Bing Bing. Um, she is 84, and she will be coming and talking about what it was to grow up in that era, especially in an automaker's world. So there's a lot going on. Um, and again, this is all to benefit the fire, the fire department and the ambulance for Roxbury. There are different verticals that I'll walk you through later. I show you some of those elements that are fundraising elements for those organizations. Um, the cars range anything from, you know, a splitback 1967 Corvette to a 1934 Bugatti or Delhaize, so we have a wide range. Right now, when we produce other concours, we generally try to have it 36 to 38 classes, both European and American. Um, we also introduced the 30 under 30 and what we call the Hot Rod Challenge. The 30 under 30 is specifically for young enthusiasts who have gotten into restoration and must be 30 years or younger and have spent less than $30,000 on acquiring their vintage car. And the hot rod, um, is more of authenticity and creativity. But again, these cars are, they're on the field. They're not driving around, so you don't have to worry about people spinning out. Um, the kickoff party at Mine Hill will be probably about 120, 150 people. In general, that's how it goes. Um, and it's a low-key, um, it's, so people get to understand what Mine Hill is doing and what they're developing and the whole process of distillery, and then it leads into the rally throughout the hillside. This is just kind of a summary of what goes on on Saturday and Sunday. Saturday, as for competitions, we focus on the 30 under 30 and the hot rods. The classical concours classes are held until Sunday. The winners of the competitions on Saturday still remain on the field. They're moved into a pristine location so that they are awarded their trophies and their medallions on Saturday, but they still get to participate on the Sunday because some people don't go both days. Um, and then the classical competitions will take place on Sunday. Um, duration, just so you know, is gates open at eight. Cars and vendors all must be in place at 7:30. Gates open at eight. Um, the judging starts at noon. By three o'clock, the awards are given. The entertainment, the music, and the seminars start around 10:30, 11:00. Everything is done by five o'clock, and general public goes home by five o'clock. Um, we have a kids' corner, which is always a lot of fun. We have a partnership with BIC, and we try to, we have a couple, um, unique fire engines that come to our events that allow the kids to interact with the fire truck and learn more about it. There's skill sets and there's coloring, face painting. Um, we do have a car club and car corral area. This area is specifically for nice cars, but maybe you don't feel like they're good enough to be in the concours competition, but you still want to be somewhere close to the field of concours. And again, car club usually go together in groups of like 10, 15, 20, something like them together. Um, we do offer an art, artisan alley and a culinary corner. With these two particular locations, we actually focus on local vendors, local artists, local craftspeople, local cottage industry people, local farms. Uh, we are, we have the ability, if, if it passes through, to even offer culinary demonstrations with one of the chefs from Mayflower, who was very happy to come and work with some of the local farmers to use that and create some recipes and do some demonstrations. Um, Saturday night and Sunday, and with Saturday a dinner and Sunday with a barbecue at five o'clock. Those are just usually a two-hour deal. It's about 120 people at each event. There's only piped-in music, so it's not loud. This is a quick rundown of the schedules. That's Roxy, for anybody who doesn't know. Um, so we have very unique partnerships with media, which give us a great reach. We have a longstanding relationship with Fox, iHeartRadio, First Publications, Connecticut Magazine, obviously Hemmings and all of the auto industry magazines, DuPont Register. So we do get a lot of reach. Um, we pull from a tri-state area for entrance and competition cars. Um, New York, Jersey, Long Island, Pennsylvania, as far as Ohio, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Nettie. Um, which is great because that creates a lot of opportunities for the local hotels and restaurants to take advantage of those people in town for the weekend. Um, and again, we try to add elements that bring attention to the local communities, the local artisans, the local farms, the local stores, and drive business to them. Um, it's an economic development tool, and it's always quite successful. Uh, I wanted to go through the pricing that we're offering for the weekend. Uh, again, understanding that there are verticals within the whole event that drive revenue back to the fire department and the ambulance department. General admission per day will be $10 a person. Children under 12 are free. Um, VIP tickets, which is food and beverage, aren't included. They're $65 per person per day, and the dinners afterwards are $65 a person. Car corral and car club members are $30 a day because they have preferred parking, so it's kind of like a little bit of a privilege for them to be there. Weekend passes completely all inclusive, including the two dinners, which is $250 a person. Military and first responders are half price on all pricing. Um, so we, we take great pride in, in supporting our heroes. And as mentioned earlier, the rally cars are $200 per car. That includes two people per car. If there are additional passengers, it's, it's a hundred dollars more per passenger. Again, all of that money going back to the charities. Um, to be completely transparent, application fees for entrance for the concours competitions are $65, and for the 30 under 30 and hot rod are $45. Uh, I wanted to break down some of the verticals of revenue to drive the donations back to the charities. There's a silent auction that takes place each day. There's a live auction. Usually only four items, but there's a live auction each day. That is, uh, just before the awards ceremony. Rally fees, again, going completely back to the charity. There's a 50-50 auction. There are direct donations because the charities will have presents and boots uh, at the, at the event itself. And what we do when, in our events, we actually add a donation button to our website for the event um, and through social media, so there's always something to go there. Uh, we also work with USA Waste as one of our sponsors for all of our events, and what we do is we identify, whether it's the fire department or ambulance or the Boy Scouts, we identify other charities that might want to get involved, and therefore, all of the recyclables throughout the weekend go to that charity and can be turned and diverted into cash. And I did a couple little projections here so everybody could understand. Based on an attendance of 2,000 a day and only 35 in cars in the rally, rallies generally are 35 to 65 cars, so they're being kind of held back. Um, and based on 20% involvement of attending guests, you're looking at silent auction generating $5,000, live auction generating $300. These are, these are in the low ball, but. Um, rally fees only with 35 cars is $7,000 back to the charity. For the 50-50, approximately 2,000. Direct donations only based on the day, like physically, not through the website, but through people at the event. If only 20% of people contributed to the charities that day, um, 2,000. And then recyclables, again, concerning 20%, that is $1,000 if you took a very modest approach to what was being recycled. We also offer a guarantee of $5,000 to the charity, to the pool, or 5% of the gave profit, whichever is greater. This is a layout, a proposed layout of the event. Um, we do this because we feel it's important to have everything dotted and crossed, um, everything down from traffic flow, parking, and event flow, and where, where emergency services are available. We, we lay these out so we can present them to the town, and actually, we have to do it anyways because we have to do it for our insurance purposes and for some, in some cases, permits for the town for special events. Um, it's pretty clear. Um, we're using the top lots on Rocky Mountain for parking. We have a Valet America partnership. They do all of our shuttle services and all of our parking. Um, in each of the parking lots, there's shuttles that go around and pick everybody up at their respective aisles, and then bring them down to the main entrance of the event. Um, we've had discussions already with, um, Todd and with Matt from the State Troopers to pay about traffic flow, what can be done to ease and control flow and kind of maintain a steady traffic so that there's no backup, um, potentially making Rocky Mountain a more way during the major duration of the event, so that also mitigates the, the opportunity that somebody, if they decide to walk versus taking the shuttle that you don't have anybody kind of ambling in the middle of the road. But it's a pretty clear layout, and we can go through that later if you'd like. Um, we create what I call social centers on the field. Um, those social centers are a tent with picnic tables, whatever, providing shade, um, food trucks. If we have a bar area, we maintain those bar areas. You cannot walk around with children with her. You have to stay within that lounge area. That's just how we operate. It's a lot, it's easier to control that way. Um, everybody, when they are entered for ticketing, they do get their ID checked. We do have bag checked. We have ones. You cannot bring in outside food or alcohol. You cannot bring in outside pop-up tents. Those are liabilities. Um, we actually have our own security force of 12 that are in specific locations on the field and also that rotate on the field. We also have overnight security. Um, because we have, at all of our events, we have audio equipment there, as well as some of the cars that still stay on the field. So just in short, some of the community conversations that have happened to date. We've been in contact with the fire department, with Todd, kind of going through how things were done. We're picking up engine fiddling and how it was to send you. Um, the ambulance association, obviously, we've had several meetings with the Board of Selectmen, and we've also had some other primary kind of testing the water meetings to get the ideas out there. Conversations with state troopers because there are state roads involved with the rally, but then also just about traffic control, guidance, um, and all of that. Janet Morgan, obviously, we're, we're very close with the fire marshals because we do have tents. Uh, we know that there are permits that have to be done, or inspections that have to be there on specific sized tents with flaws. You have to have lit exit signs and the fire extinguishers. So we've kind of already got all of that in play. Like I said, USA Waste is one of our partners. We always coordinate with them ahead of time to see that it isn't a market that they do service to. Um, Power Station Events is our production partner. I swear by them. They're from work with everybody else. I work with Power Station specifically because they completely have full understanding of audio technician and what you can do and how you can mitigate loud carrying sound. If I'm told the sound has to stop at that door, we can actually bend the sound waves and frequencies so that it stops right at that door. We have delays so that you don't get that echoey thing that happens. Um, so it really, we've never gotten a sound ordinance complaint. And we try to keep everything to the daytime because, again, we feel it's more efficient, more effective, and it's less disruptive to the neighbors that way, too. Um, and there's really no need to have it go later than, than five o'clock. Um, as mentioned, Valet America is one of our preferred vendors and partners. As mentioned, they do all of our parking. They are insured and bonded, and they do all of the shuttle services, handicap included. Concrete Security is our security firm. They're out of Boston. We've worked with them for six years now. They're amazing. Durant's Rental is one of the rental companies that we've worked with. Redline Restoration is a partner of ours. They're from Blackrock. Bruce and Colton are internationally renowned for restoration on cars of all ages. And then North American Road Cars. Chris has a new bit facility in Danbury. He's coming on board as a partner as well. Um, I guess at this point, I can open up the floor to questions, Chris. Do you need to come back up here?
Great. Thank you, Chris. Here's the list, but I think you wanted to explain some things first.
Sure, I might as well.
There you go.
Hi, I hope you can hear me. I'm glad to project. Uh, I hope, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um, what I wanted to do is just explain how the town rents facilities. There's been some misinformation about that, and I thought it would be important to just go over the process. Um, we have, on the website, you'll see, and I think several of you have looked that up, we have two facilities listed for rental. One is this room, and the other is Holbert Park. Um, there are application forms for both of those, and they're applications because it has to be determined if the activities are appropriate for those spaces. It's not a given that anything will just go on because you filled out a form. Uh, this room can only be rented by Roxbury residents, and it states that on the application. The application for Holbert Park does not state a restriction, and the reason for that is because Holbert Park can be rented by non-residents. And in the ordinance, it talks about inhabitants, so there's a definition for what an inhabitant means so that we don't get confused with the taxpayer versus someone who lives in town. Um, the wording on the website needs to be updated because it can be misleading, and I think that's definitely been an issue, so I just want to acknowledge that, say that that's something on, on the agenda. Um, an ordinance on how the parks are managed is found in the Code of Ordinances, and you have a copy. And this outlines how the town runs, so these are our rules and regulations that we follow. And, uh, a copy can always be found in the town clerk's office, and it can be found online as well. It wasn't online for the last few months because the ordinances needed to be updated due to amendments that were occurring. due to amendments that were approved by the town. And then there were formatting issues. So you'll look on it, it was put up yesterday, the day before, and there's still a missing table of contents, but they're working on it. Technology, so. So before I go over the ordinance on parks, I did want to state that, you know, it's important for you to know that the fire department and the ambulance association members voted unanimously to support the proposal and they decided that they would be the ones to co-rent Holbert Park for this application process. They are interested in having RPM run the event for them. So it's important for you to know that. That wasn't in originally when the proposal came through the law. You'll be able to ask questions about that when it goes in the know in a bit. So park ordinance, it's chapter nine and it says Parks and Recreation Lake Authorities. And it's about four pages. It was written in 1987. Anything that was amended lists in the area on the ordinance where it was amended. And there are all the do's and don'ts for park usage. For Roxbury inhabitants are given precedent, but non-residents may apply to rent Holbert Park. And there is also a section in here that talks about for-profit agencies and organizations not being able to rent it, okay? But at the end, there is an exemption. I'm going to read it. And the exemption, what that does is it gives the first selectman and the board selectman the right to consider proposals. So I just want you to understand, you know, where this comes from. I like facts. If you've ever talked to me, you know that I'm going to research the hell out of something to make sure I have it right. So exemptions, this is 9-13. The first selectman may grant exemptions to portions of this article, and the article is all of chapter nine. It is anticipated that exemptions will be infrequently. On granting exemption, the first selectman will identify the exemption, the reason for the exemption, the duration of the exemption, and the person to whom it applies and reports exemption to the board selectman as an agenda item at its next regularly scheduled meeting. My father went to Quinney, New York and was taking an exam. And I'll never forget this, taught me a lot that one day. He said, "My professor told the class, 'Be sure to read the entire exam before you begin.'" And the last thing on the exam said, "Do not write on this exam or you will fail." The only ones that didn't write on the exam. So I make sure to read through right from the beginning to the end so that I understand exactly what's taking place. So there you go.
Thank you, Kim.
There's my review.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris. So do you want to, over here, wherever, Karen, you're gonna be able to...
Stick in your place, Ernie. Again, if you have any questions, if you want to be called, there's a forum here. I'll start reading off these, but feel free to come up. First on our list is Ken Murphy. Ken, Murphy, are you...
I have no question at this time.
Okay. Would I do call on you if you could just stand and ask your question? Lane Curly?
Thank you. I have two questions. It is clear that you can't guarantee our, our resources of profit or donation other than the minimum $5,000 you are promising. Is that correct?
No, that's why we have those other verticals, those revenue verticals, that we incorporate into the whole weekend. So the silent auction, the live auction, the 50/50, the rally fees in particular, that's straight contribution. And then while, during the event and also during Friday, there's a presence from both organizations for them to have donations given then. And then also through where we do our ticketing, whether it's on a website that we build for the event or through social media, there's also donation opportunities through that. Through our media partners, just so you know, First in particular. When we do a concord elegant, we actually do a very elaborate marketing campaign which also has digital aspects to it. And again, that donation button is part of all of that. And also what we do prior to any of our high-end events, we work out in all Sunday papers and Thursday papers, we do a glossy insert that talks about the event, that talks about the organizations, that talks about how you can support those organizations. So we do above and beyond to make sure that there's revenue brought in for those organizations.
So again, what we mentioned earlier was $5,000 minimum in addition to anything else speculated.
Yes, or 5% of the gate profit, whichever is greater.
My other question is, what was it that allowed you to consider posting this event on the website before there was any confirmation of its existence or its approval?
We, well, whatever was posted on social media.
Not your website.
We had, we had originally had a blip on the website. We had asked if we could because we needed to check on feasibility and interest of sponsors.
It was a scheduled event on your website? I think that's understating what you did.
It's not there anymore.
It is not there anymore, but we're not lying. You saw it before you took it down.
It's not there anymore. We put it up there because we were trying to test the waters with sponsoring brands. The first year is also very hard to get sponsors for, so we just wanted to see if there was interest. There was also, I think, some misunderstanding. I know that several people had mentioned, or had gone to the Colonial Concord website. That's an entirely different event. So that's in New Milford and that's in July, so.
My final question is, why wouldn't Southbury or Wrigley consider accepting such a massively intrusive project rather than by our town?
We are doing one for Southbury as part of the Southbury 350th birthday, which is in October.
Sharon McGwin?
So I just want to recap a little on your guaranteed $5,000 because in speaking to other departments in the area like in New Milford, their fire department received $600 for when you made a disaster of their town. So could you clarify that for me then? Did they not get that $5,000 guarantee? How did they only get $600?
With that particular event, we had five weeks to put that event together. And with that short of time, the promotion wasn't what it could have been for the attendance to be where it needed to be. They also, they did get additional monies from silent auction items, but their own 50/50 was only $600.
So were to believe that that guaranteed $5,000 would be what we could get and something like this would never happen, that it could go down to this $600?
Yep.
And what would you be, for example, a similar event that was helping Greenwich, the actual people that came for that was 8,000 people. So you're telling us it's only going to be, and when I say only, I say, well, let's make a circus of Roxbury, 2,000 people per day?
Well, the Greenwich Concord has been around for over 20 years plus. And it has been an established entity that has been successful. It's actually suffering at the moment, but that's a different story.
Because you realize we can't do that here.
Right. But also what you are not understanding is the concept of a concord for a lot of the events that we do.
Well, I mean, I'm a seasoned pass member of Lime Rock, so it's not like I'm a hater of cars. Let's just be clear.
No. All I'm saying is in general, it's a flowing traffic. So people, some people stay for two hours, some people stay for the whole day. That depends on what the level of interest is. I'm also, we're highly involved with Lime Rock. They're partners of ours, so.
So the other thing is the fields that you're talking about. I mean, if you're from Southbury, you're well aware of the Bridgewater Fair and how at the end of the rainy weekend that they use tractors to pull everyone out of the fields and the fields are a disaster. So let's just pretend it's, that happens. It happens all the time at the Bridgewater Fair. So I don't know if you can pull out your cars with tractors. I'm going to go with probably not. And so then how do our fields get fixed? Do you put our perfect little town back to exactly the way it was before?
Yes, it is. A lot of those cars that have been part of the field are either carefully driven on it like five miles an hour or actually...
Right, I can't even imagine that they're going to be able to do it.
They are even rolled on. At the time that we're proposing to do this event, it's not particularly rainy time, but when it is risk of rain, we actually put plywood down and we roll the car into this location on plywood. But we leave all venues better than how it's done.
But now the parking for general parking will be the two other fields, correct? Right, so what will you do with those fields? They'll be put down, back perfectly as well?
Jim Sturgis?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, I think it's Roxbury residents. I think there's a huge opportunity for us to give that to the fire department and the ambulance service. Why wouldn't we try it at one time? I mean, we can only say no next year. But I think to say no now is foolish. I think it seems like it could make a lot of money. So I'm all for it. I think we can solve all our problems that arise.
I apologize in advance. I'm sure I'm going to ruin some of these names and some of them are difficult to read, but Meredith?
Hello. Hi, Meredith. So I have a couple of questions. First one, these cars are old, right? So they're coming by trailer, right? Probably a car trailer. Do you hold by a truck?
Some are, some are not.
Okay. So where are you parking the trailers?
We are making arrangements to have them parked off-site. It's possibly working with behind town home toward one of the schools. And then the driver is then shoveling them for them. But the trailers are not on the field.
So that's using more of town property that we didn't know about. Okay. And the field, touching on the fields where Holbert Park is going to be if it rains, to restore the fields, what is your plan to restore it if it rains and the fields are destroyed? Are they going to be aerated, reseded?
When you, well, certainly can do that. So when we, anyone who understands or has done a vet deduction, there's an industry standard of insurance, which is either a $500,000 policy or a million policy. That just set by venues and towns. We carry a $2 million at all times to take care of anything that might come up like that or liabilities. We also carry secondary event insurance out of London for those type of...
So dealing with insurance companies, it can take a while. Who's at fault and who's at damage and what's going to be covered? So when you go to Candlelight Farm and you're at the farm or you go to Greenwich and you're right there at Holbert Park, what do you pay them to host there? What's your fee?
Candlelight, we have a venue fee.
What's your venue fee?
And I'm not, I'm not on the committee for Greenwich, so I do not, well, I do know what's going on with Greenwich, but I can't...
Okay, so what's the venue fee for Candlelight Farm?
I don't know. If I should...
$8,000? Somewhere in there, I think. Key charges for design?
No, we take the entire problem.
Okay, so what's the venue fee you run it?
We pay $50,000.
$50,000 that you run this park? And what are you paying our town?
It's a different situation.
What's the price that you're paying your town that's in the proposal?
We're proposing what we're proposing.
But what are you going to pay to rent if this is proposed?
Well...
$200 that everybody else is if you're hosting a wedding or you're a resident?
If there's a venue fee.
Because if you're paying $50,000 and you price it coherent, only pay us $200, you can only complete, you know, the fire department's only going to get $5,000. I just think that is apples to oranges.
Well, it is apples to oranges in the case that Candlelight Farm is a private property and private...
Well, our town also is private as well.
That's their policy. I know.
And we don't have a policy in place to host an event for profit said that you're coming here. So maybe what we should do is have a commission come together and charge a fee that our town is comfortable if you're going to bring this park show here. Carl does say $50,000. How much do you profit from one of these car shows for your organization? You know the round numbers off the top of your head?
It varies on necessity of it.
Your minute's up. Actually, my husband's next, so I'll take it. Okay, so roundabout, what's your profit at Candlelight Farm?
We don't have to disclose that to you.
You don't want to disclose what you profit, but you want to...
I don't have to disclose that because we have various events of various sizes.
It's clear that you don't want to share that information. Okay. So, oh, and one more thing. You have security at night in our parks. Are they armed to protect these parks? Aren't they armed? How are they going to protect them?
Yes, they are armed.
They're armed with firearms? Okay. Are you going to have the state police on with this, for rent hire, security team to make sure that nobody's walking through the park and has a problem?
If you finish your statement, I can answer it. What we do is we have our own security that is armed. We also have metal detectors. We have a second set of security just on the stage alone. And now what we do is we coordinate with the state trooper or the local police so that they could at least in their rounds be close or go through the surveillance. We do not want to burden their schedule for taking care of the community, just as with our ambulance and EMT requirements. We actually have one ambulance on location and the other is an EMT set, because if the town only has two ambulances, we don't want them both at the event. We want them to be sort of...
So you'll have your armed security department. So is the, when you rent the park for the weekend, are outside people that are residents not allowed to walk down the park at night or in the evenings? Or you have some of this?
No, people can walk around, but there, there are guards there to make sure that they do not touch street damage property.
All right, thank you very much.
Joe, did you have any other additional questions?
I get to speak?
I'll let you.
I would love to, yes. I guess my time is...
Give it to a minute, please.
Yeah.
I'll do my best. Give it to a minute, please.
Appreciate your feedback.
Yes. So my, my questions are more directed to the board of selectmen as administrative questions. Has an application been accepted by the first selectman for this event?
No.
Okay. If an application proposed by an inhabitant, right, has it been spelled out per section one of 9-1 of the parking rec ordinances? I mean, there's like a laundry list of ordinances that need to be met, right? So if we haven't gotten an application, we don't know the event. Great for, you know, for both, by the way, but we haven't even gotten an application. We don't know who's sponsoring the event. We, we're just hearing tonight that the fire department sponsored it, right? And that's great. But how do we even talk about having an event we don't even have an application for? We don't know if the event even meets the criteria of our set ordinances that that society given, right? So I think that's kind of important. It's kind of like putting the cart before the horse, right?
Understood. This, this whole idea was, was brought up along with several others and it's literally a proposal. We have made no commitment at this point and I want everybody to understand this. You know, I look at it, a lot in my role of, you know, presenting ideas and some will be good and some won't. It's not for me to say, it's for you guys to say. There was a lot of misinformation, so we had, it was brought up in a board select meeting. It took out a life of its own on Facebook and there was a lot of horrible things, a lot of misconceptions that were, that were spoken. So we thought that this was a good time to at least, you got the same information that we have and we're still learning, but there's still a lot more questions to ask if we move forward, but we're not sure we're moving forward yet. This is an open discussion. So we just wanted to, you know, see where people stand.
I've got a lot of questions, so I'm, I'm going to...
Okay, we'll go to the next one.
We'll come back to you, Joe.
And just say this, I'm just going to say that I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I'm, I'm not going to cast any judgment on whether or not we have a car show or not, but I mean, if you guys want to entertain this, get an application at least, right? And once you get the application, vet the application, make sure it meets the requirements. And if it meets the requirements, bring it to the townspeople. I think it's unfair to say that everybody in this room casted some sort of misinformation on social media, except I think it's a pop-out.
Not seeing that at all.
Because, because, you know, I mean, it does say on the town website that town facility rentals, town facility rentals may only be reserved by the town, town organizations and residents, right? So yes, Ken, I, I agree, there's a conflict there, but then you read the ordinances set forth in the, in the parking rec. They totally don't predict that. So we have some of our own housekeeping to do before we even get to a presentation, my, and so that's my...
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mark Manger? Thank you. Russell Wheeler?
I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of it. There's no reason not to try it once, as long as it gives it going to be restored back to where they belong and you've got so many...
And you've got so many people looking over the whole situation. It could be as much as a number of dollars for the fire department and the ambulance. I'm totally in favor of it.
Cindy, is it Hopkins?
Yeah, Hopkins. I just have questions to get facts and information, which is why we're here. Now, you just said there are 35 cars in the rally. How many do you expect overall, though, to be on display at the field?
Well, what I said is, on average in a rally, there's just 35 to 65.
65 in the rally, so how many total at the field when they're parked then?
Based on what we have done with like measurements, you could have 300, 350 cars in the competition. And then car corral and car club as well.
Great.
We don't want it too crowded because you have to have a lot of 10 feet between each car, so.
How many of these, approximately, how many of these cars would be trailered in, do you think? You know, I know, they're fancy cars and some aren't driven at all.
Yeah, so usually it's, it's anywhere from a quarter.
A quarter, okay, very good.
But some of those trailers actually have like three cars on them.
Oh, right, so that's even more important when you're talking about where you're storing the, the trailers that are gonna be used. You have one VIP tent on site, correct?
So we have a VIP tent, and then we have another VIP, but that's only for the entrance.
Okay.
On the fields, so they get a break from the stuff.
Okay, good. How many vendors tents do you have on the?
That depends on how many.
What you usually get roughly.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get an idea, how many people are on this field?
Maybe 20 in our town. And then the culinary corner will probably be 10, and the larger four if we do the cooking demonstrations.
Okay, thank you. How many shuttle buses will you have running from the fields to the site?
So we always have one in each field going at all time, two, right? So that's two in each parking field. And then we have three that go up and down the road.
Do you provide the shuttle buses?
Yes, we do.
You do, very good. Do you provide the parking attendants for the fields?
Yes, we do.
You do, good. Voila, voila. I regret that, you've been very informative. Do you provide the police to direct traffic from the main highways, the state highways, to you?
Yeah, we pay, we pay for that.
All right, our town does not, yes. Okay, very good. You said you have a medical tent, do you provide the people who man the medical tents?
We prefer to work with the town.
So it'd be our people?
But they are paid to be there.
Okay, very good. Are there loudspeakers at the event?
They are, but they are controlled.
Okay. With the road race, do you supply?
Rally.
Rally, I'm sorry, yeah, I know, it was put that, sorry, my writing. Do you supply the police to take care of that along the main roads? That is also your purview. Do you have fencing around the event?
Where it is necessary, yes.
How soon before the event does that go up?
Usually the Thursday.
Thursday before, okay. And how soon before the event do the vendors arrive?
They arrive Friday morning. Some, some can set up Thursday if the wish, but most come Friday morning.
Okay.
I mean, sorry, sorry, Mom.
Okay, thank you. Did we spend a lot of time?
I love your boots, by the way.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you for giving me information, because we all need the information to assist, thank you.
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you.
Jim Hurley?
Oh, yes. I guess my only question is, is it, as a community, are we gonna be able to vote on this?
Yes. So I did announce that what we're gonna be doing, much like some of the other decisions, like Brothers Bridge, we're gonna be opening up a, a survey on Friday, and we're gonna run it for a week. So if you get our normal email, just like this, our normal communication, you're gonna be able to click on a link, and you'll be, we want your opinion. We're, we're opening this up, and all of us up here want your opinion, so yes, we'll definitely be doing that. So it will open up probably noon on Friday, and it will go to end of day the following week.
Is that the voting, or just?
Yes, it's an opinion survey. Yeah, we wanna, we wanna know what your feedback is, of course, we're gonna do it.
I have a quick, will we have the results we made up with?
Yeah.
Jim, Jim Brata?
Hi. Obviously, this is no easy undertaking. Big presentation and all kinds of questions. Did you look into other places, like that's unfair, or Bridgewater Fairgrounds? It seems like it'd be so much easier.
So a concourse is a different experience than a car show. I think that's where a lot of people get confused. Like even in my luck for the historicity, which is freaking awesome. A concourse is an elevated experience. It's, you know, it's, it's not a whole bunch of cars going in the canyon for cars and coffee on Saturday, which is cool, it's all right, but it's a different experience, and it's, it's built to really focus and build appreciation for these few cars.
So that expense can all be done in the last, right?
No, but, but like definitely fair wouldn't be a proper location. If that makes sense. Like, it's great for, they, they did that truck show up there. They did a tractor trailer show up there, and that was, it's great for that, but.
South Farms and Morris.
So I, we're very good friends with Ben, actually. The, the, the town is still establishing their ordinances. They changed their ordinances during COVID. Some of that was due to noise, I think. I do not remember if I'm at the event, I don't remember, more so. But, but we do do things with it.
I was just wondering, with all the effort we have to put into this, why you've not anticipated these other venues? It seems like they want to.
It's something that pays a million dollars.
Well, the Halloween Berry doesn't lie, it's show, and I volunteer for it.
Ed, is it raised?
Uh, it's brought. So I guess my question is, is the presentation here entirely the application that's gonna go to the town? This presentation here, the three days, lots and up Friday night, Herbert, Saturday and Sunday, is that, is that the application?
There is no application, but this is what's being proposed.
So this, this will be, when you apply for it, will be what's proposed? Sorry, my notes are in the phone. So if the cars can be delivered as answered, parking on Rocky Mountain Road, and how do you, will you be ensuring that no public is parking on Rocky Mountain Road?
There's no, no parking.
In that, well, it's.
No parking signs will be posted.
Right. And so the two fields that you're proposing that public parking are relatively small. One has a pretty good drop to it right off the back. They, you know, it's a high water table, right, this whole area. And the entrances to the fields, the only entrance to the field, the field on the east side of the road, on the east side of Rocky Mountain can really accommodate a car now, so now you don't have to widen those stone, stone walls. Everybody knows, no, don't have to say that, traffic on Wellish Bridge is, is a disaster under normal circumstances. And then so when the survey comes out this Friday, we should be answering the survey with this being the application.
Yes, this is the proposal. Yep.
Right, proposal, this is the proposal, so when we get the survey on Friday, we should, this is the proposal, this is the application. We should be answering the survey based on this.
And we're gonna come up with those questions tomorrow night, that's why we wanted to have a meeting afterwards. We wanna hear what you say, and then we wanna put that together, so yes, it will be on Friday.
Yeah. I'd like to know what's gonna happen before it happens.
Okay, of course.
Yeah, I'm not sure on this one, is it Ed Clerk?
Put the last one down.
This one? No, right there, is that you?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, of course.
I, I do have a few questions. One, you know, you have advertised now nationwide. And you were expecting, I don't think you know what you're expecting, but you're, you're expecting lots and lots of cars have to be 10 feet apart, and if you get the 350 that you talked about, that's not coming, car, that's already 3,500. You looked at the Old Court Park.
At where?
The park that you.
Oh, yes, of course, yes.
Yeah, where you gonna put those cars?
It's, it's very workable space.
Really? How much space can be?
That, that, the space that is at park right now would accommodate that 350 competitive car.
Well, give me a, give me a square footage or something. An acre, two acres, five acres?
No, five acres is enough.
There is a five acre.
Well, it's hard to say, we've had to deal with.
Yeah, it's hard to say because you don't know.
We had to deal with small properties and we had to deal with large properties, so.
The, there isn't five usable acres there. The area within the walking track is probably under four. Everything else is either wetlands or steep slopes. So I'm not sure you can do it. And that's not mentioning any other facilities that you've been talking about. So if more than your 2,000 people show up, what are you gonna do then?
If, if it gets too crowded, we actually cut off the door because it's a safety.
You shut it down and just turn them around and send them off? On Wellish Bridge route?
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck. All right, I have a question for you guys. Where is, where does your legal authority come from, the plan, or you think about the three-day affair on this town? I, I don't think it's mentioned anywhere in his own laws.
Actually, that's what Kim had just referred to in the ordinance it does.
Three days.
Well, you know, obviously, we presented this, we're proposing it, but yes, according to the ordinance, it has no specification of time.
Well, that's a problem.
Okay.
I mean, don't you think it should be specified? I mean, this is a huge change from anything we've ever done before. Maybe we oughta press the delay button.
That, that can be addressed, but this is where we are now to propose this idea and have a discussion.
We need some kind of a framework for this, you know, to protect those of us who live in this town. I'm sure I'll think of another question if I can.
Carrie Cooper?
Right. I mean, that survey absolutely does say that only town residents can rent the town park. So my question is, when were the ordinances updated?
Um, the sword.
Go ahead.
The park ordinance was written in 1987.
And it never been updated?
No, not those, not those sections.
So what was, why on one page it says one thing on, on the ordinance, it says another?
I don't know, we inherit, this board inherited that website page, so we made a change from prior.
When are you guys gonna vote on this? Because it's coming up. I mean, they have to make plans and everything. It's less than six months away.
March 7th.
March 7th. Next meeting.
Who owns the fields that you're gonna park the cars in?
Town of Roxbury.
They're on the land trust, or you own them?
No, they're a, they're a town of Roxbury.
Um, and the concourse, the elegance, can you talk a little bit about if you're affiliated with the actual concourse de elegance? What's the name of your company?
The RPM Agency is the name of our, our company.
And the concourse de elegance is a national event?
No.
For charity?
No, no, no. A concourse de elegance is, is a type of an event, it's a type of an event.
Well, it's the event that the gentleman started in the seventies and sixties.
No, that's the Greenwich Concourse.
No, I'm talking about one that's all over the country, it started in Pebble Beach.
No, no, they're all very separate events. They are all their own events.
Well, if you look at the website, they're all, the gentleman that started, my, my question, that's your event. The question is, are you affiliated with the actual concourse de elegance event?
I guess I'm not understanding what you're asking. The concept, let me clarify something. So the concept of a concourse de elegance, that is the name of a type of an event. There are numerous around the world. So there's the Greenwich Concourse, there's Pebble Beach Concourse, there's Amelia Island Concourse, there's.
But they're all run by the same.
No, they're not run by the same.
Like, if you want something. If you look at the website for the actual concourse de elegance, they have already have, they seem to have listed on their website.
No, I think you're confusing Hagerty.
No relation.
Hagerty, yeah, no relation. Hagerty Insurance, just so you know, is one of the most predominant insurers of vintage cars and boats in Brooklyn, Brooklyn. Over the past five, six years, they have slowly gone and blocked some of these concourse de elegances and brought them under the ownership of Hagerty. So you might have seen maybe on Hagerty's site the list of the events that they own, but each concourse de elegance, except for the ones owned by Hagerty, are separate entities. And even each one of those owned by Hagerty is a separate entity. Has a separate board, has a separate subcommittees, it's run, it's judged differently. So it's, it's, each one of these concourse de elegances is an event in itself.
Okay, so. Okay, thank you.
Janice Pizita?
Hi. So is it your intention to make this a yearly event if you feel it is profitable for your company and to give to charities, I guess?
That would be something that the town would decide.
So we would have to go through this every year, this kind of ritual, no?
No. No, I'm sorry. So no, if, if, I get it, I understand that, thank you.
This is exhausting, the whole thing. For everybody, I'm sure for you, but for all of us, this is exhausting.
No, so should the event, should the event be successful, right?
Yes.
And everybody was happy with it, and it will grow each year, maybe not this number of cars on the field, but the experience we've, uh, and, and so the money, money that goes to the charity would increase as well. So that would be something that after we do a wrap-up, do we think it worked? What are some of the things we can enhance on, what can we improve on? What else can we do for the organizations? You know, what can we do with our surrounding communities to make this an even more fulfilling experience? That would be something we would do after the event and then decide.
But we get to decide as a town?
Yeah.
Not, you, you don't get to decide, we get to decide?
Correct.
And we'd have another vote, and hopefully not every year we'd have to go through this.
Let's get through this first one first.
I missed the vote part, we're just doing a survey or are we voting on this?
We're surveying.
Survey.
Survey.
No, we're doing a survey. We're doing a survey, because we want your feedback.
Okay, so then, so then you got.
And then you vote.
And then we would vote on our stuff.
We don't vote.
Okay.
According, and according to the ordinance, I mean, obviously, your input is very valuable, and we all love this town, so, you know, I, I, we definitely are going to, you know, listen to it, hear it, and we will post the results, so we'll get to see exactly what you guys are saying.
And then just two other basic questions. For those of us who use the park every day, multiple times a day, and there's a number of us who do, what is the situation for us to be able to use it during the daytime? I'm glad, because I'm, I'm one of the neighbors who lives right across from the park.
Right.
And, oh, I know. Our neighborhood is up in arms about this. It's just, I, I was even, now my sister's to visit, and I'm saying, well, I've gotta figure out if this event's happening, because if it's happening, it wouldn't even be a good weekend to come, because it's gonna be congested, and, you know, I appreciate the noise you're containing and everything, but it's just not what we want in our neighborhood.
No, and then to give you.
And imagine being right across the street.
To give you an example, like that, somebody asked me about, I guess there's a, there's a running group that comes in.
On Saturdays.
Be able to steal one, or something.
But they park there, I mean, there's no way. They park, the whole parking lot is filled with runners. But for those of us who walk, we walk our dogs, we, you know, walk for peace and quiet, what do we do? So we walk with all the commotion going on? We walk around the track?
Yeah, I mean.
All right.
We're not probably using the track track, so.
Yeah. And then, my other question finally is the cleanup. How quickly do you clean up? And you're saying you restore it to even better than it was?
Monday, it's a complete wrap-up. Everything is cleaned, repaired, by Monday night, it's like nothing happened.
So all day Monday is cleanup, and porta-potties are out of there and all that business?
Yeah.
So everything looks exactly the way it did, and better, you said?
Yeah. I'm not a smoker, and we, I'm just. I'm not a smoker and we, just so you know, like, so when I, when we do events, we don't allow smoking except for in designated area because I don't, we drive around and...
All the cigarette butts and everything? Because even after other events, I, as I walk the park, I pick up garbage. I, and I can't even believe it. I'd said to Patrick, I can't believe that people in Roxbury are leaving garbage around because that's not, you know, what I think we normally would do. But after these events, I end up, like, usually for a week or so, there's gar, little garbage here, a little garbage there, and I'm picking it up and I don't wanna do that.
Completely understand and agree with you there. But we make it a point to meet it better as a town.
Okay, those are my questions.
Charlie?
John Smolig. So, uh, I'm sorry, so you said that, uh, I'm correct. So you guys will be setting up there on Thursday and then we'll be added there on Monday? So really the park is gonna be tied up for four days?
No, you can still have access to these, you set up.
Oh, okay.
But it just, to, to make it a tangible setup, you really need to do setup Thursday and Friday.
Right, right, okay, all right. You know, it'd be a nice gesture if this does go through, you the neighbor's free VIP pass.
I think this, this is no joke. One of our events, I actually paid for one of the neighbors to go wait for the weekend.
Oh.
But yeah, no, without, we do make where you...
Wait, 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 yeah, my, yeah, what, what is going on in the question? So you said that Rocky Mountain's gonna be, there's a possibility to be one-way? Because we're north of Apple Lane, that part of, from Apple Lane up to Wellers Bridge. So if it's one-way, what would you leave? You can't come back?
No, no. Well, how we've done it, because we did it in, in Martinton for an event, and the residents that were on that road, we allowed them to go through.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Please be with me because this one, it's home. On a lot of levels. I'm sorry if I'm getting emotional, but I've been here forever. I didn't have a grandfather up on the wall. The firehouse was built because of Old Roxbury Days and that shut down that part of town for an entire weekend. And that was my childhood. I fall heartily support fundraising funds for our fire department. My concerns come into what prevents loopholes from causing future people to abuse this for non-town fundraising events. That is my sole concern. I want to help to ward it so that people don't go through the doors to abuse that.
I think that one. And you know what, I, I, I just add, I mean, this is, we haven't heard a lot from the fire department ambulance. Todd and Sarah, did you wanna say anything? Because, you know, this, this is, you know, we, we brought this to be a, or a, a, for our community. Do you guys wanna say anything? Because, I mean, you've also been through the presentations and the process.
All right, I guess I'm wrong.
But this is, this, to answer the question shortly, um, this is for a charity organization. This is the only reason it's being talked about to begin with.
No, and that's what I support.
Okay.
My concern with the town structure and the legal order because I've seen countless times where people take a loophole in a legal order and use it to take it where it's not meant to be. And that's my concern.
And I can assure you, I love this for Todd just as much and I, I don't wanna ever see that happen.
And, you know, what, what happens when you're not in office anymore and the next person?
I, I, very valid point, very valid point.
So that is my, so because I represent that fundraiser, I, I want to bring up the fact that the town used to put down weekend events to raise funds for this purpose. It's been there and we haven't had it in a long time. And it shut everything down and we had vendors, we had baby machines coming through. I mean, I loved the sounds of it almost a year ago. I mean, people that don't, if you didn't get to see Old Roxbury Days, you can't understand. We had horse-tron carriages going up and down, there was horse poop in the roads for, I don't know how long. I mean, there was a big disruption and it was a weekend event every year. From the seventies until, I mean, this building here was only built in the nineties. I was in school and my grandfather, he was doing a lot of building and he needed to raise funds. I support that part of it. My concern literally comes down to taking those technicalities that people are nitpicking on. That's the part I want to protect because I can support fundraising for the town purposes. And so there's a way that it can be worded to limit those extenuating circumstances for something like this for town benefit purposes, that would only be a lot of everything.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sarah Loria. I am the Roxbury ambulance chief. I'll come up to the front so you all can see me instead of breaking your necks. Um, the, the, uh, first off, the ambulance voted with all our members, um, that were present, voted unanimously to support this. Uh, the ambulance gives up thousands of hours to this town. I understand your concerns about, uh, disruption, returning it the way it should be, traffic flow, all those issues. I understand that. But I am also, my family has been here a hundred and fifty-nine years, okay? So my grandfather was the founding member of Roxbury Volunteer Fire Department. So if you think that volunteering and caring about your neighbors and being a community isn't in my blood, you don't know me very well. And that's my point, is that in the ambulance, we are here for you. You dial nine-one-one, we come. You dial nine-one-one, we come. We are inconvenienced every day. Every day our volunteers are. So when we had Old Roxbury Days, it was a three-day event. We do pick and fiddling. We have two thousand people. She's got two thousand people coming today? We did it.
But the town profits fully from that. This is a profit company that's getting most of the profit and they're gonna hand you a little bit of profit. Why don't we put a town car show on ourselves?
Would you like to volunteer pick and fiddling first? Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to the bike just.
All right, thank you. Todd, and then we'll wrap this up.
My name's Todd, we're the chief of the fire department. We had a meeting also, our members that were present in the meeting, they actually voted for this. It's a lot built around the same concept of pick and fiddling, what we do with the area and the space. And we talked about this as a fundraiser, we've talked about having a car show with pick and fiddling. It's tough to do it all at the same time. Old Roxbury Days was three days, and pick and fiddling combined. You know, we got the space over there, we could do it. The traffic flow's the same. The parking lots, out on, by Wellers Bridge, those are our reserve lots for pick and fiddling. We've parked cars there before, for Old Roxbury Days, we've parked cars there for pick and fiddling. This is something we've brought and looked at. Try it for a year, see how this goes. Our members are willing to put the time in that we need to make this work for the town. And we could get some return with the money, which is great because we do things like, we paved the parking lot next door with some of our own funds, we didn't come to the town. Put the roof on the firehouse, we didn't come to the town. We had our own money. We have a fire truck company. It's about seven hundred and twenty to fifty thousand dollars in a few years. It'd be great if we don't have to come to the town for that whole chunk of money. If we could do more fundraising like this. We've talked about this for quite a while. We sat down, we went over the event space and where we can do this and said, what can we put on in this amount of area and make it feasible? This doesn't go late at night, that was one of our concerns for the townspeople. This is, we're trying to make this work through, for a fundraiser, for the fire department and the ambulance. And you could sit here and go back and forth about the money and who's getting what. Ask us what we're gonna make of pick and fiddling this year. I have no idea. I got an idea what we hopefully will make. But weather and stuff, there's times we barely break even and we hope the next year's a lot better. So if we sit down with this, go through with this, and move forward and we make some money off of it for ourselves, for the ambulance and fire, we could sit down at a later date, see if we wanna do it every five years. See if we don't ever wanna do it, see if we wanna do it next year. Talk with RPM, negotiate what sort of percentage, see where it's at. Guys in the fire department also, would like to put this on because we can go to it. We don't have to find everybody for a food tent, we don't have to find security like we do with pick and fiddling. This is, the three groups can work very well together. As far as manpower and our families enjoy this car show also, and we can work with it. There's times when pick and fiddling comes up and it looks like it's gonna rain like crazy for Thursday and Friday. We go in that field and we set it up on Tuesday night. There's times we can't get the stuff out of there until, sometimes because our guys are working during the day, we're volunteers. There's some around during the day, yes, don't get me wrong. But as far as the setup and getting out, there's sometimes it does stay there for a few days. This company's looking to come in and get out. We put it back every single year, better than we found.
So, all right, I'd like to thank you all.
I think, excuse me, to work this out, but I'd like to have one request. That among the questions you have on that survey, that you actually include the question to the town. Would they prefer to commit to twenty-five dollars a person per year to go toward these, our, our ambulance and fire department rather than look, than consider it?
Todd, yeah, but I'd just like to ask the last question. Todd and Sarah, if you, if you happen to know, I think we all just received in the mail the donation slip for the fire top banana. I know it's received one for the EMS as well. How much do you receive from the residents of the town each year?
I'm the chairperson.
For the ambulance.
For the ambulance.
Okay.
Um, last year was our biggest year ever and we got eighty-seven thousand.
Ninety.
Ninety thousand bucks. That was huge. Usually we get fifty or sixty, around that.
How about for the fire company?
I'm the treasurer of the fire department, we're doing a hat. And the fire department had a record year, this year they were twenty-five dollars short of seventy-five thousand.
Maybe you can, maybe we can improve on this. Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, because we're pretty much, I mean, the town doesn't take, pay for us. I mean, you guys take pay for some of our people.
But we also bill all of the people who we take in the ambulance. We are a charging ambulance. And this last fundraiser was great. And I think that, speaking as someone who was on the ambulance, but not at the meeting because clearly I would have been against this whole idea, that we had a very successful year and our townspeople are wonderful to us and I am personally thankful for that. And so I think that that is another way to look at this because people have come to me and asked me if the ambulance does not have money and if I thought that they should give extra money. And I thought, we just had this great fundraiser and we don't wanna seem that we are not appreciative of our townspeople that gave that amount of money because it's kind of embarrassing, okay?
I don't think that the ambulance has ever, um, not appreciated a single dollar that we get as association. So I'd like to say thank you on behalf of everyone who has given to the ambulance.
And on behalf of the town, we thank you guys who are volunteers who were out there. All right, so I just wanna thank you all. I wanna thank you all. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap this up. We already went through, you already had a chance to speak, so I wanna tell you.
I know, people that are prepared tonight, putting it on the town website with this survey, but people who don't use online, maybe the, the relation. Barbara used to send out a town-wide call to everybody that was on there. Is that possible to do so all the time?
It's not possible to do a survey over the phone.
But you can send out the information where they can find the survey or if somebody offers it.
I'll send out a text if you guys would like me to send out a text as well.
It's the same as the ambulance and fire got to vote and if we only get a survey, we need to know the townspeople.
I understood, there's, there's sponsors, this is the sponsor, so that's why.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can I call my name off? So could I just say something?
Oh, you didn't, I'm sorry. You missed the name, I'm sorry. Was it? I'm sorry. My apologies.
I just wanna say that I've been here sixty years and I started with the fire department when we started picking and fiddling at Old Roxbury Days. And it started very small. We were in the rain sometimes, whatever, it was a three-day event like Todd said. And, um, it grew every year and we had like three thousand people some weekends that came. We had shuttle buses from here over to the center of town. We shut the whole South Street all off, everybody just did fine. We had people, three hundred people that helped, lived here in town, that used to come to help us at pick and fiddling and Old Roxbury Days. It was a lot of work, but everybody had a great time at it. And it went on from the seventies to the nineties. Then the Historical Society took it over, not quite as big. Again, we had lots of people. We had, uh, police at nighttime to stay, we had police during the day on every corner, signs everywhere. Did we ever have any trouble? No, not that I remember. I chaired it for many years along with all the fire department and the auxiliary. And then we had, the Historical Society did a civil war enactment up at, uh, the Land Trust Field. It was wonderful, two-day event, not a problem with traffic because we had plenty of people there to take care of it. And our tractor parades that we have every year, they're brought in by tractor trailers that park over in the field. Do they make a mess? No. If they do make a mess, our townspeople take care of it. There's not a problem. There's never been any arrests for anything or any rowdiness that went on. And so on and so forth. And forever, the pick and fiddling this year did have a great turnout, I heard and stuff. And I just think, my feeling is, because I've been here so long, worked with everything in town, I feel these people that are against it are very selfish and I think they need to wake up, that we need to support our fire department and ambulance, which I was in for many years, get up in the middle of the night at the store. Time that you all gave us a little time, not worry about walking in the park for a few days and stuff and just give us some time. Thank you.
And I just wanna thank you all. I love the passion of this community and in this room. And I thank you so much for taking time tonight to be here and with your, I appreciate it. Thank you.